I call a order of the Newman City Council Regular Meeting, January 25th, 2022. City Council Chambers, 6 p.m., 9:38 Fresno Street. Notice this meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision of Peron E. of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950, City of Newman Resolution Number 2022-04, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. Given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, this meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via video conferencing at https://zoom.us/j/96161052680, passcode 027852, and via teleconference by calling 669-900-6833, meeting ID 96161052680, with passcode 027852. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening, we pray, eternal God, I pray that you bless us in this meeting and keep us. Lord, make your face shine upon us and be glorious to us. I pray that we feel your presence during this meeting because you are with us everywhere we go. I pray that this meeting focus upon you and your plan for us as a body of believers. Let us, let our actions in this meeting be valuable to our end, which is to build up and edify one another. Amen.
Amen.
Item number four, roll call.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember McDonald.
Present.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Present.
Mayor Prokhem Candia.
Here.
And Mayor Graham.
Here. Item number five, any declarations of conflict today? Conflict of interest? No? All right, moving to item six, ceremonial matters. A, presentation by Stanislaus Council of Governments, STANCOG, regarding the 2022 Regional Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy, RTP. RTPSCS. Welcome Elizabeth Hahn.
Mayor, before this presentation, I just want to welcome Ms. Rosa Parks, who is the Executive Director of STANCOG and her team. I know Israel is on the air as well as Elizabeth Hahn, and they're going to do a presentation for you regarding the regional transportation plan and the sustainable community strategy.
Good evening.
Good evening. So it's okay for me to go ahead and share the screen?
Yes. It should be.
I'm sorry, just give me a moment.
Let's see. There you go.
All right, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. I'm the Deputy of Planning and Programming at Stanislaus Council of Governments, and I want to thank you for allowing me to present on the Stanislaus County of Governments 2022 Regional Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy. I just want to give a little background on STANCOG. STANCOG is a council of city and county governments established to address regional air quality and transportation issues. We are governed by a decision-making body that we refer to as our Policy Board, and the Policy Board is comprised of 16 elected officials from STANCOG and our member agencies. This includes five representatives from the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, three representatives from the Modesto City Council, and one representative from each of the other eight city councils in Stanislaus County. The City of Newman has one representative who I'm, or the City of Newman has one representative on STANCOG's board who might know you know well, Councilmember Candia serves on behalf of the City of Newman. And before I move on to the presentation, I just want to thank Mayor Graham and also the council members and Newman staff, Catherine Reyes and Terry Barquess and Mike Holland have all been really helpful in helping us develop the plan. They've contributed a list of projects that are wrapped into our overall list of projects going out to 25 years, the planning horizon, and they have always been a pleasure to work with, and so we really appreciate their support on all our projects, including this one. So. So as for this evening, I just want to briefly cover a little bit about our transportation plan, give you a little background and let you know where we're, where we're at, also share that, you know, it's very, we've been coordinating very closely with not only the local agencies but our other federal and state planning partners, and also we've been, again, working very closely with you all, and we have a pretty intensive public outreach that we've undertaken as part of this update. So today's presentation is one of many outreach activities that are being held in support of the update. The major elements for outreach have included, we have our Valley Vision Stanislaus Steering Committee for which Justin Hendricks is a member. That includes representation from all our cities in the unincorporated county. It's largely made up of, you know, the representatives from the planning departments for each of the local agencies, but we have some other representatives from development and environmental justice that have been participating for a couple of years now. We have, we're also doing outreach to STANCOG's bike ped citizens and our advisory committees. We keep them up to date on developments of the project as time proceeds and meet with our Policy Board and Management Finance Committee as well. So far, we've held two rounds of, three community workshops for each round where we sought input from community-based organizations, business leaders, and members of the general public. This year, we've been fortunate enough to be able to present our presentations during these meetings in both Spanish and English to encourage participation by all the residents within Stanislaus County, and we also have an interactive project website that allows members of the community to register to receive regular emails, access recordings of meetings, and register to receive notices about upcoming events. The website also hosts a survey to gather information on priorities and needs, and it houses all the materials as we've been developing the plan, including, as I said, the meeting presentations. So. See. So what is a regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy? In short, it's a long-range transportation plan for the entire county. One of the most important elements of the plan is a list of transportation projects, as I said, looking out for 25 years. The preparation of the plan is required by both state and federal government, and it's required to include, to have a 20 minimum, a 20-year minimum planning horizon and be updated every four years. So our last plan was updated in 2018, and now we're anticipating wrapping up this 2022 planning effort sometime next summer. Another important feature of the plan is that it reflects a shared vision of the cities and Stanislaus County for transportation system that meets its residents' needs, and as such, it must be developed with consideration of land use and development, housing and employment, and that's one of the reasons why our steering committee for this project has such a large representation by the planning directors. So it's important to note that this is a high-level programmatic document. While we include lists of your and other agencies' projects, it's not a project-level analysis, it's a programmatic-type analysis to see how these transportation projects fit together and what impact with forecasted land use changes and also potential land use strategies will have on the impact of air quality and just congestion and travel, not only, well, mostly within, within the region. So this planning effort is closely according with guidance from the Valley Vision Stanislaus Steering Committee, as I mentioned, and so let's move on. So what must the plan do? It must be multi-modal, meaning it covers all the various key modes of transportation, roadway, transit, bike ped, and aviation. It must be financially constrained, meaning it can't be pie in the sky, but the projects that are identified by the local jurisdictions are within, are fiscally constrained in that there's reasonable available funding either from local, regional, state, or federal reserves now or into the future in order to fund those projects. The plan must meet, must meet all federal standards for air quality and also support the state's greenhouse gas reduction targets to combat climate change. The sustainable community strategy element of the plan details how the region can achieve the greenhouse gas reduction targets set forth by the California Air Resources Board to help California meet their, the state's climate and air quality goals. The plan must comply with the California Environmental Quality Act as well, which focuses on making sure that we understand and address potential negative environmental impacts that might result from the plan. In early September, in cooperation, cooperation with the Valley Vision Stanislaus Steering Committee, the goals for the 2022 RTP were established, and these are kind of a quick or a high-level kind of description of what those goals are, but they're focused on better mobility and accessibility, social equity, economic and community vitality, and the other things that are listed here on the list. These were developed with consideration of local agency and, you know, information from the general public on what they think should be priorities, and it also considers the national goals established by the Federal Highway Administration or USDFP, also federal administration, and also the state goals. And that's why you see certain things like social equity, resiliency, climate change, and those kinds of things. So this list is also available on our project website, and I can, I'd be happy to provide more information on this if anybody else is interested. So an important part of the approach to developing the RTPSCS is using scenario analysis to develop long-range solution that meets state and federal requirements while improving the air quality, like, air quality of life in Stanislaus County. We are currently working with Valley Vision Stanislaus Steering Committee on developing four scenarios that emphasize different growth patterns based on the following guiding principles: ensuring job-housing balance, encouraging growth in areas where the total annual miles of vehicle travel are already low, preserving farmland, increasing access to opportunity for everyone, including low-income and minority populations, and encouraging infill growth. These guiding principles will help to ensure that scenarios meet greenhouse gas reduction targets, regional housing needs objectives, and agricultural preservation goals. And this is especially critical because one of the important aspects of the plan is that for the local agencies like Newman, to be able to apply for federal and state funding, the region has to have an adopted and approved regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategies. So it's really critical that we are able to meet all federal requirements regarding air quality, including meeting national ambient air quality standards, and also meeting the state's greenhouse gas reduction targets in order for, for our cities and counties to be able to continue to receive funding for transportation projects and be able to move those forward. So next up, as I mentioned, we are currently analyzing scenarios to see how each of them perform with regard to meeting state greenhouse gas emission targets and the air quality standards set by the federal government. We anticipate presenting the draft scenario results to the Valley Vision Steering Committee in February for their consideration. In March, we'll be doing some outreach to local stakeholder groups again, including those who represent minority and low, low-income groups. We anticipate holding a third round of public stakeholder meetings in March, and once results of the scenario analysis have been analyzed and we have scenario that meets state and federal requirements, we'll be asking the Valley Vision Stanislaus Steering Committee to help select a preferred scenario. We will then develop the draft regional transportation plan document, prepare an environmental impact analysis report, and we'll post those documents on our website for public review and send out, send out information to notify, you know, stakeholders within the region that that's available for review. There'll be two formal public hearings that are anticipated to be held in late spring, and then we will address public comments to the plan, and we'll bring the plan ultimately to the Policy Board for consideration of approval in the summer of 2022. So here we have a little screen capture of our website, and as I mentioned before, you can see we've got little bars here that you can click on to access prior PowerPoints and recordings for meetings, and then further down below, if you, if you go on the website, you'll see an opportunity to complete a survey and to register your email address so that you can receive more information as, as the activities are developed. So, so that completes my presentation, and I appreciate your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Do we have any questions for her? I'm not seeing any. Thank you so much for your guys' time.
Thank you. Take care.
Then we'll move on to item number seven, items from the public, non-agenda items.
Scott. You wanted to go ahead and just ask people to either raise their hand or something, and we'll see if we have anyone that wants to comment.
Yes. If anyone could raise their hand, and I'll give this a few minutes.
Or they can send you a chat.
Yes, or send me a chat. Now I'm going to stop the screen sharing. Let's see here. Well, hold on one sec.
Can you give me a help to do that?
Yeah, if you could conclude your screen share, if you don't mind. I don't see any hands.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on. If one comes in, we'll move, come back. Item number eight, consent calendar. A, waive all readings of ordinance and resolutions except by title. B, approval of warrants. C, approval of minutes of the January 11th, 2022 meeting. D, adopt resolution 2022, next to number, resolution approving the application for land and water compensation fund grant for the Newman Community Conservation Area and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents pertaining to the grant. E, approve a one-year contract extension with CSG Consultant for building inspection and plan check services. Counsel?
I move that we adopt the calendar.
Yeah, first, was that second?
Yes, second for me.
We have a first and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right about that, Mayor, we fell asleep.
No problem. Item number nine, public hearings. A, adopt resolution 2022, next to number, a resolution adopting the City of Newman 2022 Highway 33 specific plan, and for that, I believe we have Rachel Rainer on the line.
Hi, Mayor, this is Catherine. I'm just going to do a brief introduction, and then Rachel and the team will take it away. The highway-specific plan is a policy-planning tool intended to guide the orderly development of land and improvements along State Highway 33, our highway corridor. The Highway 33 provides primary access to the city, and the highway-specific plan area encompasses a corridor along State 33 bound by Stur Road in the north, Union Pacific Railroad to the east, the Stanislaus County, Merced County line to the south, and various parcel lines running approximately 300 feet to a quarter mile west of Highway 33. The city applied for and was awarded a Sustainable Communities Transportation Grant from the California Department of Transportation, and we put RFPs out and selected our consultant, which is RRM, and W Trans Engineering Firm to update our existing specific plan. And so they proceeded to have several public meetings and got a lot of community input. We're grateful to the community for participating and letting us know what was important to them, and they are going to take away the present, take the presentation away. I'd like to introduce Debbie, Rachel, and then Steve with W Trans. Rachel will be running the meeting, if you would give her the ability to share her screen, and I will let them take it away, and there you go.
Thanks, Catherine. Can I just get a thumbs up that folks can see my screen? This is Rachel. Awesome.
Okay, yeah, I've got you.
Okay, so good evening, Mayor Graham and City Council. I'm Debbie Redd with RRM Design Group. I'm here with Rachel and with Steve Weinberger from W Trans, who is our transportation engineering team. RRM Design Group is a multidisciplinary firm with planners, landscape architects, urban designers, architects, and engineers, and we love projects like this where we're looking at a corridor and we're designing improvements and planning for future land uses. Next slide. The specific plan boundary runs from the north, Stur Road, all the way to the southern city limits, and it really focuses on all the properties that face the Highway 33. Next. So we started this update off with some community outreach, starting with a community questionnaire, and we held some public workshops. The emerging trends that we found were people were really interested in improving the safety along the corridor, both bike safety and pedestrian safety, and installing and providing more amenities and improvements along that corridor. As far as land uses, they're interested in commercial retail, places to eat and be active, they're also interested in aesthetic improvements like landscaping and trees, and finding ways to incorporate public art and new signage. So in the workshops and in the questionnaire, we organized the corridor into four primary segments and gave the community opportunities to vote on different solutions to incorporating a bike path, whether it's on the road or separated, and, and then we've taken that information and incorporated it into the community, into the specific plan. What we heard from, we also presented a lot of beautification improvements and got direction on providing directional signage at key locations, new paving and crosswalk enhancements when people would feel safer, and it would help beautify the town, adding planters, utility box art, street trees, and so we're going to go through those at the end of the presentation, what we have incorporated into the plan. So the specific plan is organized similarly to the existing specific plan into four primary sections or chapters, and we have three appendices attached to it as well, which give a little bit more detail to the plan. The first section is our introduction chapter. It provides a plan summary, it goes over the specific plan requirements, the existing conditions, specific plan guiding principles, and gives a summary of the community outreach that we did to come up with this plan. Section two covers land use plan, the circulation plan, and infrastructure plan, and it has goals and policies for each one of these. The land use plan is based on the adopted general plan land use designations, as well as the Northwest Newman Master Plan Land Use Map. The circulation plan includes an overall, an overview of the circulation network, and it also includes mobility goals and policies. It has a section on best practices toolbox, and it has recommendations for each segment of the corridor. Section three is the urban design guidelines. We have a downtown district and a highway district, and the guidelines are intended to guide site design, architecture, landscaping for future projects along the corridor. And there, the goal is to have these guidelines address these issues, but also allow for flexibility and creativity, and provide development, and provide that development retain the underlying principles that create a safe, a human-scaled environment consistent with the Newman small-town character. The last section is implementation and phasing section. Section four provides policy direction for implementation and phasing, financing, administration, and how you would amend the specific plan. It also includes a comprehensive list of improvement projects, which can be really helpful when you're going after funding and you're looking at what projects you, you would like to get funding for. What we'd like to do now is go dive in a little bit deeper to some of the corridor concepts that we're suggesting in the specific plan. And we've organized this by dividing the area up into four primary segments. The, we'll start by looking at segment one and then go down the corridor to segment four. With that, I'll turn it over to Steve, walk you through these concepts.
Thanks, Debbie. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is Steve Weinberger with W Trans. We're the traffic engineers supporting RRM on the project. So I'm going to start on the slide here, as Debbie just showed you, there's four segments. These are the two northern segments. Segment one, north of Jensen Sherman Parkway, and segment two, from Jensen down to Yolo. Just mention here that on segment one, we have recommended a new multi-use path on the east side of the highway to extend up to Stur Road. And I'll, I'll cover a little more detail, the Jensen intersection and south of there, but we're, we have intersection improvements proposed at Jensen Sherman, which I'll cover in a sec. We have some flashing beacons down to the south, which again, I'll cover in detail on the next, more detailed slides here. So next slide, please, thanks. The two southern segments from Yolo down to Enyo Avenue, segment three, and then segment four is south of Enyo. And again, I'll cover these in detail, but we'll, we will be showing you cross-sections for these, showing you how to, we're proposing to stripe bike lanes on the corridor, and then we have a number of intersection improvements, lighted improvements. Next slide, please. Just to kind of get you orientated to the type of improvements we're recommending, there is some existing traffic signals, and I'll talk about the traffic signal at Enyo Avenue in a minute, but there's other crossing locations where we're recommending to add crosswalks at a few locations, and to accompany those in terms of safety and crossing, there's two different devices we'll be talking about, and one is the HAWK, which is above, which is a flashing red signal. This is a Caltrans-adopted device. It is specifically for pedestrian crossings and gives a red, steady red, and then a flashing red signal requiring stop by vehicles. Lower, the lower image shows you RRFB, Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon, which is a warning device, and all the crosswalks we're adding, we are either recommending the HAWK or the RFB, the HAWK at the higher-speed locations on the edge of town, and the RFBs more on the, in the inner core of town. So next slide. All right, we're gonna, at the top of the screen, you'll see the intersection of Jensen Sherman. There's an existing pathway to the right on Sherman that we're proposing to extend and connect to a new multi-use pathway going south, and that'll take you all the way to the intersection with Yolo, and I'll show you that in a subsequent slide. Let me talk about the, the crosswalk at Jensen Sherman. We are showing a proposed cross- We are showing a proposed crosswalk there and we have recommended that that be provided once there are other improvements on Jensen Road to the west. You'll see proposed multi-use pathway. Right now Jensen, as you know, is is not very conducive to walking or biking. It's fairly narrow. Once that is improved for pedestrians and bikes, then a crosswalk should be provided to connect to the pathway to the east. And and with the crosswalk needs to have a type of device like the Hawk I was talking about. Now Caltrans upon design of this may decide that a full traffic signal is warranted at this intersection. But at a minimum, the Hawk for pedestrian crossings is needed. So the report recommends either the Hawk or the signal at Caltrans discretion when it comes time for implementation. So let's move south and next slide please. So this is the the cross-section. Both north of Sherman on segment one, which we talked about, the future multi-use path, which you see there on the far right, separated from the roadway by about twenty feet. And then the cross-section on the right is south of the intersection with Jensen Sherman that we just reviewed. So we showed you that multi-use pathway is proposed. That would be on the east side of the highway, again separated from the highway. Both the travel lanes and the shoulder space, another ten feet separation. There. Next slide please. Okay. This is focusing on the intersection at Yolo Street and you'll see on the far right that path we've been talking about. It now because of right of way has bended further to the east on the backside of the commercial buildings there on the east side of the highway. So that's further out and that would, the path would then terminate at the intersection with Yolo and there would be some measures to bring the cyclists to a new crossing on the north leg of the Yolo Street Highway thirty-three intersection with some curb bulb outs to shorten that crossing distance. And to connect with the existing bike lanes that already exist to the west on Yolo Street. As you know, which connect as a route to the high school. That crosswalk there at Yolo would be accompanied by one of those R F B flashers. And again, would have a shorter crossing distance. Before I go south and talk about the cross-section to the south and bike lanes, I wanted to point out the features at the expanded Copeland Park and I'll let Debbie jump in and talk about the next slide about the park.
So this is a bird's eye view looking at the Copeland Park. Often we call it the triangle park sometimes, where you see the multi-use path coming down. You can really see the bulb out along Highway thirty-three at that crossing. And then we really see that Copeland Park is an opportunity to create a public space or enhance an existing public space for the community with picnic tables, seating areas, bike racks, some decorative lighting, some lawn. Expanding that lawn area by making this road a one-way road. Right, that's where the red car is. You you don't really need to have that much paving because you have a two-way road on Yolo. That gives you the opportunity to really expand that park and create a stronger public space there.
Okay, I think I'm taking, thanks Debbie, back over the next slide. So now we've gone south of Yolo. And you'll see to the left here, this is the cross-section to the north and you don't see the the bike path because it's separated from the roadway. But there'd be the three travel lanes on that section just in the north. Now going to the south and we're showing the section on the right now. And this is north of Fresno up to Yolo. And this is pretty kiss, pretty consistent now through the next several blocks as we get through the downtown area. You'll see the three travel lanes. And we are proposing to add bike lanes to the corridor. And in order to gain that space needed without having to widen the the highway. We have recommended to eliminate parking on the east side or the right side in this case. Which gives us room now to add those two five-foot bike lanes. You'll see on the left or the west side, we've maintained the parking along that frontage. And we have the two five-foot bike lanes. We're left with a couple feet of buffer between the bike and the travel lane. We did explore going with narrower travel lanes, eleven feet, which is very common on a lot of Caltrans state highways. To get an additional couple of extra feet in that buffer space. In discussions with Caltrans, because of the truck traffic in this area, their preference was to maintain the twelve-foot wide lanes rather than going to the eleven-foot lanes. So we have discussed both those options in the report. The primary option based on Caltrans desire at this point is what you see here, the three twelve-foot lanes with the one foot buffer. But the new bike lanes and no parking on that east side. Okay, let's continue south, next slide. This is I think this is the same, okay. This is also north of Stanislaus, but it's essentially the same segment that we just reviewed. So we'll move on to the next slide. And as we get down past, actually up in Mariposa at the top of the screen, you'll see we're recommending a new crosswalk. We're trying to provide a pedestrian crossing of the highway about every other block. We do have, the only cross rocks right now are the signalized intersections. We're trying to add a few more with some separation, not at every intersection. But you'll see one in Mariposa on the north leg. That would be accompanied by that R F B device. And a curb extension on just on the west side. Can't provide the curb extension on the, on the east side because we have the bike lane against the curb taking up that space along this section of the corridor. But you see as we go south, we have the bike lanes on both sides, that same cross-section that I talked about, those three twelve-foot lanes with a little buffer between the bike and the travel lane. And then as we go get to the intersection with Kern, that's your existing signalized intersection at Kern. And what we see is sort of the entrance to the downtown area. Next slide. So the plan recommends doing some brick accent paving to really set that gateway feeling. With with the the different treatment of the intersection to let drivers know they're now entering the downtown area. There would be some gateway signage and Debbie will talk about those visual enhancements later on in the presentation. Next slide. Actually, I'm sorry Rachel, if you can go back one. I just wanted to point out here, you can see a little bit closer that cross-section. So this is looking to the north. So on the right side, you see that bike lane against the curb with that buffer. And then on the other side of the street near the blue car there, you see the cyclist and then the parking maintained on the west side. Okay, next slide. Alright, as we move south, we come to the intersection with Fresno and the Plaza area. And again, the bike lanes through this corridor, we're recommending a new crosswalk at that Plaza location in Fresno with that curb extension on the west side with the R F B flashers. Similar to the other crosswalks I've discussed. Again, no bulb out on the east side because the bike lane is against the curb. Next slide. And here is a little focus image of, you'll see the Plaza on the upper center area. And and the new proposed crossing with the bulb out there on the west side. Okay, next slide. As we go south from Fresno, we get to the signalized intersection with Merced and that brick accent paving as sort of that southern entrance into the downtown area to demarcate that for drivers. So we've chosen to the existing signalized intersections as sort of entry points both north and south to do with the brick accent paving and other signage, which again Debbie will talk about. South here, you see the bike lanes, the no parking still on the east side to make room for those bike lanes. With that, that buffer. Next slide. And here's, here's a cross-section as we transition from the downtown area. We've, we've eliminated that buffer space. We've just made them six-foot wide lanes. Just to get a different look as you're moved from the downtown to the southern part of the corridor. Into the more less downtown and more arterial operations. Next slide. And we come to the intersection with Inyo Avenue. The city is designing a traffic signal for this intersection now. We were actually able to review those plans and make recommendations to do our best to kind of provide some benefits for the bicyclists. This is, can be and is a very fairly large intersection. So we have done our best to make recommendations to shrink it slightly, but still have the capacity for the traffic at this intersection. And you'll see the green paint through the intersection. This is an adopted national standard for bike lanes using green paint. The crosshatch markings in what are called conflict zones. Just to make the drivers more aware, especially when we have a large intersection like this where the cyclists might be. And we were only using this green paint in high-traffic areas where there are conflict zones between vehicles and cyclists. So it's not a continuous green, just as we come to some key intersections. And through this one intersection in particular, we've recommended that. But this is the new traffic signal and then south of Inyo, we get into the the final segment four. We, I'm sorry, Rachel, go ahead and go to the next slide. We had a little blow-up here of the Inyo intersection to give you a view of that, that green crosshatched to demarcate the cyclist. Great. Next slide. Okay, and we get south of Inyo. We are proposing to have the bike lanes through the city limits. And that, at that point, they would terminate. There is one crossing we're recommending and that is shown right there. This is between the retail center on the west and the Dollar Tree store on the east. We did notice there's some demand for people to park and cross in this area. So we've recommended this mid-block crossing and because it is at the southern end town as speeds are starting to increase, we've reck, we've wanted to upgrade the type of crossing device. And so we've recommended a Hawk signal there at this new crossing. And from south of there, we have the bike lanes which extend through the city limits. And I believe that completes the southern end of our recommendations. Next slide. Okay, Debbie's going to take back over from here, Debbie.
Yeah, so we have, we're proposing in the, in the plan, a series of beautification concepts that can be implemented. And the goal is as a driver enters Newman, that they see signage, they see entry monuments, they see street trees and other beautification elements that will help indicate to the driver to slow down and that they're entering the town of Newman. And the next slide shows your existing gateway and opportunities. There's a great opportunities to add to this existing gateway to improve it, up upgrade it a little bit and put one on either end of town. Also suggesting that directional signage can be a great way to help unify the character of the town and direct visitors to key locations and direct them to the downtown. The next slide shows this is the intersection of Merced or of Kern, but it would be proposed that we put an entry monument for downtown at both the Kern Street intersection and the Merced Street. So as you're driving down the corridor, you're, the drivers see that this is, this is how you get to the downtown. The next slide shows an opportunity for public art. The community listed that as one of the things that they're interested in. A great way to do that is to create a utility box art program. And you can get funding for things like this. And this would, this is a suggestion to help unify the town and beautify some of your utility boxes. While at the same time incorporating public art. You have some great street trees in the downtown core and our suggestion is to continue that pattern of street trees out to the edges. And as you enter the town, the pattern might be less regimented and equally spaced, more organically spaced. And then as you get to the downtown core, they would be evenly spaced trees. Also allowing for string lights for key times of the year. We're also suggesting to add some, take your street furniture that you see in your downtown area and, and expand that along the corridor. At least in the downtown district area. And finally, here's some pictures of the brick paving that we're suggesting at a few of the key intersections, both crosswalks and in intersection paving. Also tying it back into the brick that you have in your downtown core. So with that, we started this project within twenty twenty with a lot of community outreach. We carried that community outreach through the project. Did the quarter concept designs in the spring of twenty twenty-one and drafted the specific plan. Now we're at the final stage, the public hearings and review and look forward to any comments you have today. Our goal is to get to adopt a resolution, adopting the twenty twenty-two Highway thirty-three specific plan. With that, we'll open it up for questions.
Okay.
Any question?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, excellent presentation. Love it all. Just a couple of areas in, in the stoplight in Inyo is so overdue. I'm so glad to see that that's, that's happening. In fact, when our kids started driving, I said, do not ever use that intersection. Go block north, take a left or a right. The only thing I would ask is that we take a look at whether or not we should have a stoplight at Highway thirty-three in Yolo. That's kind of a dangerous spot, in my opinion. The other area of concern is from Inyo south to exit out of Knob Hill between Burger King and Taco Bell. Oftentimes right along thirty-three right there by the Burger King or semi-trucks parts. So when you're pulling out, especially if you're taking a left, it's really hard to see. And then you have semi-trucks flying down Highway thirty-three south. And I would not expect law enforcement to happen to sit there all day. These guys are flying through that area at fifty-five, sixty miles per hour. With the light, in you know, I know that will help reduce their speed. But is, it's all, those two areas have always been a real concern for me. I don't like to pull out of Knob Hill directly onto Inyo. It's a cluster. I like to pull out farther down by Burger King, but then you have those semi-trucks flying through there. I think that's a pretty dangerous area. So just a couple of things I, I hope we take a look at.
I agree, I agree with you Scott. It almost seems like that Hawk light probably should be moved almost down to where the Taco Bell is. And then sidewalk back up to where the Dollar General is. Because that might prevent some of those trucks coming faster when they see the lights and different things.
And I don't know why we have so many trucks traveling through our town. I don't know if they're avoiding the scales or if it's just a better route. But they really do fly through that area of town.
I have a couple of questions. One is, let me say, there was a great presentation that you guys put on, enjoyed it. And a couple of things that I guess I'm concerned in is we know that we're dealing with a, a state highway, which is Highway thirty-three. Zones coming into the city of Newman, speed zones are critical in terms of having bike lanes. And, and having semi-trucks coming through our town. And I, I, I didn't hear anything, I guess, of the presentation that addresses speed zone. And those are going to be And those are going to be crucial in terms of making sure that we have controlled speed coming through the city of Newman. Because just like a councilman Ball was saying, those semis, man, you know, they will, they come straight through until they get to that stoplight. And that's when they slow down. So I think that's, that's a crucial part of addressing, you know, the Highway 33 in terms of the lighting and the speed zone. One last thing is that I'm, in which I'm hoping this doesn't happen, you guys didn't address it, is parking meters. I don't know if that, that has been brought up in terms of your presentation or you guys doing your, your study. But parking meters, and I hope that that doesn't be a part of our city because we're, we're a city that basically people enjoy coming here. And, and I think that parking is, is right now, it's, it's, it's it's pretty, it's pretty nice, you know, in some places, you know, but, but I think that if we have parking meters, I think that's going to really, you know, kind of be a dead point for some people here.
Any other comments? For, for me, I think it was a great presentation. I liked everything you guys presented. The councilman hit my concerns that I had too. And so with that, thank you very much for the presentation and we look forward to moving, hopefully moving forward with this at some point.
Sorry, I was on mute, but I do have one.
John's there.
Hey, on these crosswalks, is there any way, you know, it gets pretty foggy down 33 guys. So these, these hawk signs and all that good stuff, that's great stuff. But you need the yellow beacons on the concrete when you cross the streets where the people cross. So the real bright yellow, and it gets a lot of people's attention. And I think that's a real safeguard for your crossing guard, your crossing systems is the yellow beacons that light up when the people cross the street. That's just one of my ideas. I'm done.
I, I like those too, John. Unfortunately, what I've seen and everywhere I go is 90% of the time, those things aren't working anymore. If they're, they seem to have a high fail rate.
And, okay, there's one other thing about, they showed that really pretty square in the middle of the intersections. You know, trucks are overloaded in this town and it's going to crack the center of those intersections like crazy. We had that problem in this town, what, 10, 12 years ago? It cracked all the con, I mean, all the bricks in the middle of town going down Main Street. Do you recall that?
So the engineering of those would have to be up to par.
They would have to be concrete. They shouldn't be, uh, you'd have to be stamped like concrete if you really want it to work. That, that's, I'm done. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you guys for your presentation. We look forward to moving forward with this potentially.
Are you guys taking questions from, from the public?
Oh yeah, yeah, it's a, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing. I'll open it up to the public. Okay, yes, see a hand. Go ahead.
Council, I'm on, I'm on a phone only. My name is Desi Calzada. Let me know if I'll yield unless it's my time. Okay. Hey, I appreciate the comprehensive report. It was, uh, it was definitely a lot more detailed than I thought. And so I want to thank the council for taking the initiative to look at the issues for our town. But I think I'd like to, as a member of the public, really kind of back up what I'm hearing from my, from my council members. And that is my concern is that it seems like we're focusing really hard on trying to build a bike lane on Highway 33. And my experience living here is that exactly what you guys are all commenting, that the truck, the traffic interaction with bikes is dangerous on Highway 33. And right now it doesn't exist, so we don't have any data to show. Uh, you know, kids stay away from Highway 33. They're smart and they go into town. So I guess, uh, I guess I would say from as a resident, I think that we should focus on building the east, west, you know, going from east side of town to the west side of town, encouraging bike lanes in the residential and maybe on Main Street. And maybe not focus so much on trying to, you know, encourage the traffic and the vehicle pedestrian interaction with bikes. Because I just, I care a lot about our kids and the next generation of kids. And I, I just don't know that it's going to be used. And I don't know exactly what everyone said here in fog. Creating a bike lane that might encourage kids to ride to school down Highway 33. It's much safer for them to probably be on side streets. And I would also like to encourage the council to consider what the other gentleman said. In the town, we spent a lot of money putting in the brickwork downtown. And that didn't have a lot of trucks on it. There is no doubt that we're going to spend a lot of money putting beautiful bricks in on an area that has lots of truck traffic. And I would just encourage that maybe there's a stamp or other alternative there that looks almost as good, but that we don't have to sit there and fix every couple of years. But that was all I had. Thank you guys for allowing me to chime in.
Okay. Thank, thank you, sir. Any others?
Yes, one other comment. Ms. Saquera, I'm going to, let's see here. There you go.
Good evening. This is Maria Saquera. And I'm the Assessor with Central California Irrigation District. And the only comment I have is just to kind of keep in mind that there are ditches that runs through that area. We have our sanitary ditch and there's also drains and pipelines. So when the time comes that any work is being done, make sure that you guys check with CCID. So that any irrigation, drainage, any type of facilities that we have, it does not get interrupted to our farmers. That's all. I want to make sure it's, it's on record. So when the time comes, please check with us at the office. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of this item.
Absolutely. Thank you, Maria.
Okay, I don't see any other hands.
All great, all great points. Anything else from the council?
Mayor, if I may, if I may add something. Wanted to thank the RRM team. They did a great job with this. The outreach on this was pretty incredible. They got a lot of attendance and a lot of participation with it, which is really great. Just want to remind the council and the community. This is a long range plan. So as, as our community evolves, you know, there may be times where, you know, immediately or in the beginning, maybe the bike lanes aren't there, maybe they get added later as, you know, things evolve and we get more trees and more development in there and that will naturally slow down things. So there will be a way to phase this and to implement it. And all the comments that you made and we heard from the public as well, you know, trucks are a big part of our community. We are in the, you know, in an agricultural area. There's no doubt about it. And, you know, we get a lot of trucks during the summer. So we'll have to find a way to do the best implementation possible. And that may include phasing of certain improvements. So so with that, again, I wanted to thank RRM and their team. And again, the recommendation is the council adopt this Highway 33 specific plan with the attached resolution.
Okay, now bring it back to the council. Counsel on the action?
I'll make a motion. We adopt resolution number 2022. Next in number, a resolution adopting the city of Newman, 2022 Highway 33 specific plan.
All in favor, say aye.
I'll second an aye.
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 Motion carries five zero.
Hold on, mayor, you got, I didn't, I didn't hear all the ayes. So you may want to just ask, were there any nays?
Were there any nays?
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you guys again for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Very good job. Very good job.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your evening. And we, we took detailed notes of all your recommendations so we can incorporate those.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
All right.
Regular business.
Number 10, regular business. A, adopt resolution 2022. Next number, a resolution accepting the CMAQ Kern Street pedestrian improvement, federal aid project number CML dash 5172, apparent 032 as complete, authorizing the city clerk to record a notice of complete, completion with the Stanllos County and authorizing the city manager to make final payment of retention funds to TBS contractors.
Thank you, mayor. I'll take this item. Our pedestrian improvement project on Kern was awarded to TBS. The project has been completed to our satisfaction and the engineers. We walked it. This project completes the sidewalks on Kern. And now we can pick it up on T Street and try to get some more sidewalks going. This project final construction cost was $107,492.89 with two change orders. One, change order number one for 575 and change order number two, which was a balancing change order, which means that we had a little bit more material that we decided we want them, we wanted them to do. Like there was a stretch of curb that I told them we needed to replace. And so we do that by a balancing change order. And so we're satisfied that they have completed the project as contracted to do. And we recommend you accepting the project and authorizing the city manager to release retention.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the council.
Okay, I'll, I'll take this one. I move to adopt resolution number 2022, a resolution accepting the CMAQ Kern Street Pedestrian Improvements, federal aid project number CML dash 5172. Zero.
I'll second that.
We have first and second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regular business, item number B, adopt resolution 2022. Next number, a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract to TBS contractors for Highway 33 and Inyo Avenue Intersection Improvements, federal aid project number STPL dash 5172, apparent 024, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you, mayor. I'll take this one as well. We put this project out to bid. This is a 10-year-old project. It is for the improvements on Highway 33 and Inyo. What, what this is going to do is widen the intersection a little bit to give trucks and traffic more room to turn. Also with some pedestrian crossings, it's also setting us up for the future traffic signal. This project's, like I said, has been a long time coming and we're happy to be at the point where we can consider awarding the bid. We did advertise this through December and we opened bids on January 12th. We analyzed, the engineers and city staff analyzed the bids, making sure everything was in order. And we do recommend awarding the bid to TBS contractors for $1,068,088.95. And I'll take any questions.
Counsel? Not seeing any. I'll bring it back to council for action.
I'll, I'll move to adopt resolution number two, 2022. A restoration accepting bid and awarding contract to TBS contractors for the Highway 33 and Inyo Avenue Intersection Improvements, federal aid project number STPL dash 5172, parentheses, 024. And authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
There we go. First and second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Item number 11. Items from District 5, Stanllos County Supervisor.
Good evening, mayor and council. Russell Fowler from Supervisor Chan's conference office. I just wanted to be with you tonight. Don't have much of an update, but I know supervisor would be here, but he's got another commitment. But always happy to hear what's going on in the community. And once again, we're happy to partner with you on any efforts or be available for any comments, questions or concerns.
Any questions for Russell? We got nothing tonight. Russell, thank you for hopping online with us. We appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thanks, guys.
Item number 12, items from the city manager and staff. Michael?
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to go up. Thank you on the Highway 33 project. We wanted to really get this done. We were coming up against some deadlines, but I think it's a good project. Just, just reminder, you know, this, you know, it's a planning document that gives guidance. So when we start implementing some of these things, all your comments and concerns will be taken into effect when we actually design those specific pieces of the project. Whether that's the crosswalk at Fresno and Highway 33 with the beacons. You know, we'll use what's most appropriate at that time. Sometimes our consultants don't always generally don't live in the valley. So they don't know what truly fog is. So we have to address those things, you know, but those are really specific when we get down to each individual project. That's when it tends to work the best. Though, but all your comments and concerns are very valid and we'll make sure that they get incorporated as we, you know, move forward to start implementing this project.
One of the things I was thinking of for the gentleman that called in and said about the bike lanes. If, if we were to move forward with that, couldn't we just move the bike lane on one side of the road to the other and double up the size of the bike lane, allowing more buffer zone for safety?
Yeah. And so, and then, you know, right now we'd even have to look at it like as you, as you go out there and you look at the crown of that highway, you, you can't even get a bike lane on there right now and probably fall over. I mean, the, the grade on that is so high. So, yeah, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done, but that, that gentleman's comments were very valid. And so we'll have to really give some close consideration as to what that's going to be and what that's actually, how that's going to be implemented. So you know, things are going to change over time. Technology changes, you know, how we, how we move and how we do other things, vehicles and all that also change. So whatever is implemented in the time when this gets implemented, whichever technology is there. So we'll, we'll utilize it then. So, but again, the gentleman's comments were very valid. And, you know, safety is obviously an important concern for our community. So with that being in, we have an update coming, I believe, next Monday or Tuesday. But, you know, the, the Jensen Highway 33, you know, Sherman Parkway, you know, we've already started doing, I mean, we've been working on some engineering for that for about, you know, four or five months already. So, you know, we're already pressing forward on that. We're already starting to engage councilants. Getting traffic engineers involved because I know to the council, that's an important intersection that's out there. And how we, how we move from Sherman Parkway to like Big Lane, you know, down that stretch of Jensen Road there. How do you get two cars down there? How do we move pedestrians down there? So we're really taking this into account. And you know, this will give us some guidance as we move forward. But please understand, we're already doing some of the engineering on that. So and we'll give you an update at the next meeting. I'll give you an update next week. So the other one too, the other, the next update that you're going to get at the, at the February 8th meeting, I believe, was Councilmember McDonald that brought this up. You'll be getting an update on the, the veterans. We talked about having a veterans memorial and doing some design there in the plaza. So we're going to give you an accounting of funds. And then we're going to talk a little bit about next steps forward and get your direction. So that'll be coming forward at your next meeting. And again, I believe it was Councilmember McDonald that had asked about that. So that is forthcoming. I wanted to let you know that. Just some housekeeping stuff. Right now, City Hall, you know, we had some with Stanllos County, everything was a little bit crazy there for a while regarding the COVID and everything. So we anticipate City Hall will be reopening our doors on Monday, the January 31st. Things have really settled down on our side. It's like things have started to settle down. At least the peak, seems like the peak has reached, as Dr. B says, in, in Stanllos County. So we should be on a downward trend. So if this trend continues, then again, we'll be reopening City Hall to the public on January 1st. We do have some projects that are moving on that you're going to, you're going to see here real shortly. So on We do have some, uh, projects that are moving on that you're gonna, you're gonna see here real shortly. So on Prince Road, um, south, I believe, of the, uh, the multifamily project there, that's called Mattos Ranch. Hundred and six single-family lots out there. Uh, we do have a developer that has purchased that property. So if you've been by there lately, you'll probably see the stakes. Um, so that project is moving forward. You probably start seeing some equipment, moving dirt, I would say, as early as March. Um, but probably March or April, you're gonna be seeing some beer, getting some dirt being moved out there. Uh, same as is going on at the corner of T Street in Orstimba. Uh, you know, there's dirt moving around on that project. You've already seen that one. That's the ten thirty-five T Street project. And then we're getting a lot of interest, uh, in our community. Um, as you know, there's a project right across the street from Mattos Ranch. It's called Caton Ranch. Uh, about a hundred and twenty lots roughly. Um, they, they have submitted a a request for annexation, an application. At your last meeting in December, you approved EMC to do an environmental on that one. Um, they've paid the deposit and so that project is in, in the process. If I had to give you a rough timeline, I would probably say a project like that with all the environment and all the other work that's going on, um, would probably reach planning commission in the fall and then it would come to the city council afterwards. So it just, you know, it's about six to eight, uh, months in environmental work before it can get to planning commission into the council. And, uh, one last thing. So, uh, as you know, uh, there's a group called Tunnels to Towers. Um, if you recall, Tunnels to Towers is the group that stepped up, uh, when we had Officer Seeing and the tragedy that bestruck his family. Uh, they stepped in, Tunnels to Towers stepped in and, uh, took care of the Seeing family mortgage. Um, and paid that, that, uh, mortgage off for, um, his widow. Uh, they do fundraisers throughout. They wanna come to Newman and do a five K run. Um, and they wanna do that in, on June eleventh. So, um, there's still some planning that needs to be involved. Um, you know, I'm obviously very supportive of that, uh, project. They've done a lot for our community. Um, they're gonna have to, so the POA and, and of, um, Corporal Lopez will do a presentation for you as well as the LT in terms of everything that goes along with that. But they're gonna need a letter from you real shortly in terms of, uh, does June eleventh work for us? Um, if I don't see any real objections from you, I'm gonna go ahead and put that letter together and then we'll bring something formally to the council, uh, for approval. Um, you know, we, we believe working with our staff would probably be no different than like the Bailey's Run. Uh, you know, getting a run going on there on a Saturday morning. So um, again, so if I don't really see any objection from the council, I'm gonna go ahead and just give them a letter saying, yeah, we're gonna, uh, June eleventh would be a good day for us.
Graham, I think so.
Yeah. Yes, Councilman.
Um, can I walk it?
Of course. We're gonna give you a two-hour time limit, though.
Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm real hopeful about that one. You know, they Tunnels to Towers told, you know, our, our officer, you know, a couple of us had gone up to Sacramento to do the run here in the fall. Um, I think they started talking to him then about bringing one to Newman. Originally, they wanted to, well, why don't we do it in Turlock? And he convinced them, no, that Newman's the place that it needs to be. So, uh, we're hopeful we can get a good turnout. Um, they said they would be happy with two hundred. I told, uh, Corporal Lopez, he better expect at least five hundred. I think, um, you know, we get the word out and start getting the word out in March, April, you know, for a June run. Um, I, I think we can get five hundred people out there. And I believe in, in the heyday, if some of you are here, I think we probably got, you know, close to eight hundred for some Bailey runs some years. Um, so, um, that'd be, it'd be really good. And there'll be opportunities for corporate sponsorship. So if any of you, uh, you know, anybody that would be a good corporate sponsor, um, well, when time comes, we can get out there and start getting some corporate sponsorship for this as well and show uh, Tunnels to Tower that we appreciate that they stepped in and helped our community in our time of need. And we're there to help other communities in their time need and, you know, the fallen officers and soldiers and, you know, the other people they do great, great work for. So so with that, um, I can answer any questions that the council may have.
Uh, that, you know, Tunnel to Towers is a great program. They help a lot of families across America, firefighters, cops, who, you know, they help out the widows or widow of, uh, those families. It's a great program, one of the best to donate to. If you guys are looking to donate. Um, my only question, pigeons. Where are we at on pigeons?
Catherine, two hundred. We signed the contract. They're supposed to be moving forward with, uh, trapping in and, you know, baiting them. So, yeah, it's the company from Patterson, I believe. You may know who they are. Um, Mayor, and so, uh, we already signed the contract. I think we cut the check. I think they're probably doing the initial stages of the installation and, uh, baiting them of it.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions for Michael?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Michael. Um, the West Side Theater, uh, they were thinking about going LED on their, uh, like the neon. It would be a lot cheaper. Uh, putting it in and it would be easier on the PG&E bill. Have you ever talked to, uh, Ferris about that?
Um, I have not. I know, uh, our Public Works Director, Ms. Reyes has. Uh, and I know there's, there's probably some opportunities that she shared with PG&E and having some of that. But Catherine, you wanna answer that?
Sorry.
No worries.
Okay.
Good thing I, um, tell Michael what's going on. Um, yeah, so I did meet with Ferris and we got one proposal to convert the neon to LED. Um, they're the, and so I'm, uh, need to do a little bit more work, but I, I hope to ask for that funding in the next year's fiscal budget. So that'll be, um, we'll be putting those, uh, budget numbers together, you know, April, May, and then it will be brought to you. So
I'm on the committee.
Oh, good.
Westside, yeah.
So, we're planning to, um, take that to the, get that in the budget and see if it's something we can do.
She says, yeah, she already got half. All she gets is the other half. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Ally?
Evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Um, just to report back, we are currently in our third week of basketball season here for the youth um, league association. I know that, um, it's been a little bit of a roller coaster for us, but we're rocking through it and, uh, hoping to continue our basketball um, as scheduled for the next, uh, month or so, a month and a half or so. Um, with that being said, I know that, uh, baseball is during their last signups now. I said I would talk about baseball a little bit, if anybody's interested in the registrations. Um, this is the last week for Newman Youth Baseball Registrations. Um, on the side note now, uh, for farmers markets, we are tentatively looking for, uh, the month of May and June as our spring farmers market. Um, timeframe, I will come back next meeting with a actual set date and, uh, time for that market. Um, with that being said, I can answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions for Ally?
Yeah, uh, let me just, uh, mention this, uh, at the two-on-two meeting with the board, uh, and superintendent. You have a big support in the superintendent, you know, um, that you, you know, they've been kinda tough on you and we kinda loosen him up and he's going to work with you and, and, and fall over backwards to make sure that whatever you need, Ally, is gonna happen.
Thank you. He's a, he's a great gentleman and I was able to speak to him too. And he, he, uh, he is very supportive of our, um, activities, our sports, and as a city as a whole, very supportive and working together. So, um, I'm glad to hear that from his perspective.
Great. Thanks, Ally.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Chief Richardson?
Evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, the only thing I have tonight is the K-9 Association has announced their crab feed is going March twenty-sixth. Tickets are on sale now and it will sell out fast. It has every year. So if you want tickets, um, we believe they are here in our lobby and, uh, maybe at Mattos Newspaper and Chevron, I believe.
What was the date again?
March twenty-sixth. Doors open at five, dinner's at six.
Outstanding. Another great event. Glad that it's back in person.
What, what's the, uh, what's the location?
Is it the FDEES hall?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Lou?
Evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, uh, just wanna let you know, we've filed the annual financial transaction report with the state, which is, uh, one of the three big reports we have to file every year. So we got two of those completed. The last one is the, uh, local government compensation report, which is a list of all employees and, uh, how much they got paid based on just titles only. Um, other than that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Lou? None. Thank you, Lou. Always seems like you guys are busy with audits or something.
It ain't audits, it's budget.
Right. Catherine?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Michael covered a lot of what I wanted to say, but I appreciate you guys awarding that Highway thirty-three Inyo project. That has been a long time coming. And also, um, keep letting us supply for these grants for the park. We are gonna get funded for that park out there. So we're playing, we're applying for every grant that we can find. Um, I just wanna give a shout out to Public Works employees because they um, are really out there just working hard and keeping everything, um, going for the community. And some people might not even know it, but I, if you see a public works employee, you should say thank you for what they do out there. And that's all I got. I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, let me just say this about your employees. Um, they keep a smile on their face. I passed two of them, uh, this, uh, morning and they were doing pothole fields. And, um, and these guys, you know, they even stopped and waved at me when I passed by them, you know, so, and they keep a smile on their face. Great people.
Good.
They're definitely busy. Thank you. Thanks to them. All right. Chief Bowen, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a couple of things. I wanted to remind, uh, either, uh, Councilmember Ball or Pimentel, we have the Oparea Disaster Council meeting, um, February third at one thirty. That will be a virtual meeting. So, uh, I don't know which one you will be able to attend, but I'll get you that information if you don't already have it. Uh, also just wanna remind everyone to slow down and take it easy while you're driving. Uh, give yourself some extra time. We've had some pretty significant, um, motor vehicle collisions, uh, this month. And, uh, I can answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions? Now, definitely slowing down. That fog's been bad. Councilman Ball?
Like to thank John for, uh, covering me last week on the, uh, healthcare task force. Uh, I sent him the wrong agenda. Uh, turns out both of us were on it. Um, but I do need coverage for the, uh, Operational Area Council and Disaster Meeting that Chief Bowen just referred to. I happened to be teaching again that day. So if anybody's available, um, John, I, I need to keep, uh, sticking it to you. But, um, thank you very much.
I'm in. I, I can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman McDonald?
Yes, I just wanna say have a great evening. And, uh, I wanna shout, do a shout out to Chief Richardson that, uh, I'll be thinking about you, uh, Sunday. And, uh, and go forty-niners. Have a blessed evening, you all.
Go Niners.
Uh, Councilman Pimentel?
Well, since I brought up the West Side Theater, this weekend they are having a Elvis Through the Years tribute from Rob Eli. I hear he puts on a pretty good show there. It's Saturday, January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, starts at eight PM. Uh, everyone have a beautiful night and go to the show.
Are you gonna wear your Elvis outfit?
Uh, no, I, I do Tom Petty's. No, I don't. Don't come around here no more.
Thank you, Councilman. Pro Tim Kenzie?
Uh, nothing tonight, Bear.
I have nothing. Thank you, guys. Thank you for everybody that was involved in the meeting and the presentations. Appreciate it. And with that, I'll ask for an adjournment.
So moved.
First, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good. Go Niners.
Go Niners.
Good night, everybody.